Good evening. Welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the Half Moon Bay City Council. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Eisen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Warback?
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Great. Can we rise for Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. Mayor's announcements of community activities. I'd like to remind everybody that we're going to have our second housing talk. The Home For All group is coming and is going to help moderate our talk on October the 23rd. It'll be from 6:30 to 8:30 right here. Please come. Bring anybody that you know that has any interest in housing. That might even be the entire town, right? So please come. It's going to be a great discussion. We also attended an event recently. Vice Mayor Warback and I, and he'd like to say a few words about that.
The mayor and I attended a press event at the entrance to Martin's Beach. I hope you've all heard that the U.S. Supreme Court has decided not to obviate the Coastal Act and give access to the beach to all citizens of California and in many other places. This affects how people can use public resources. So it was a real victory for the people, and it was a wonderful event. And if you haven't been to Martin's Beach, you really ought to go. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. We have a report from our city attorney, a report out from our closed session this evening. Katherine Enberg.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The council met in closed session to discuss the Warburton versus Walford case, and the BRAC requires the city council to report out of closed session any decision to defend litigation. This is a case that alleges injuries resulting from a bicycle versus motor vehicle accident during a triathlon event. The city's defense of these types of actions is covered by the city's insurance pool, Plan JPA, and the council voted unanimously to defend the litigation and will be represented by the Howard Rome Law Firm, which was assigned by the Plan JPA Insurance Pool.
Thank you. And now we have our city manager, David Bosch, to give us some updates.
I'm not aware of any updates this evening, and I'm checking with department heads and see no one coming forward.
Great. We have one blue card here for public forum. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? If so, please fill out a blue card. This is Joffen Stein.
Is that better? Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city council, for the opportunity to speak. I have spoken before, and I am speaking on another beach that I would like cleaned up that should be as beautiful as perhaps Martin's Beach. That beach is the beach that runs, in your jurisdiction, from Poplar Street to the Miramontes Cut. Currently, the beach has incredibly heavy use by Seahorse Ranch of horses that walk down the beach and from the Miramontes Cut, which they never walked down before until the winter of 2016, the rains, and they pollute the beach. So you could call it horse feces, horse manure, crap, shit, whatever you want. It's all over the beach, and people walk in it. And I'm here for two reasons, because I live at 534 Al Sass Lorraine, at the corner of Miramontes and Al Sass Lorraine, and I am also a lawyer, so I have the contract with me. I have CC you on various emails, all of you, to city staff about this, and I have two main points on this contract. Number one, you should terminate the contract immediately or non-renew the contract effective, no matter what you want to do about the beach, even if you want to leave the horse manure on it, but you should do it effective December 31st, 2020. Why? Because the contract has an automatic renewal clause in it, and if you don't terminate or non-renew the contract, it will automatically renew for another five years. So that's the first reason, no matter what your position is on cleaning up the beach, you'd want to do that to be able to renegotiate the contract. It's just good public governance. That's one issue. Separately, wholly apart from that issue, is what you can do now. The way I read the contract, the Seahorse Ranch is in breach of the contract in three different ways. It's in breach of the contract because it's using the beach in the first place, the sandy part of the beach. The contract itself doesn't allow them to do that, so that's a breach of the license. Secondly, it's in breach because it's not cleaning up the ingress and egress areas. And thirdly, it would be in breach because even if you took the position, which Seahorse Ranch certainly would, that it has a right to be on the beach, it's in breach because it is bringing its horses onto the beach in the same place it's taking the horses off, which is the Miramontes Cut, which the contract clearly would not permit. So what can you do about it? You, the council, or the city manager, actually, can suspend the contract. Seahorse Ranch will then appeal, and within 30 days, you have a public hearing, and then you can decide what to do, whether to keep the contract going, whether to renegotiate it, or whether to terminate it. Thank you very much for your time, and should anybody have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. I know not now, but after the public session or some other time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. I agree, this is a critical issue, and I think we do need to have a discussion about it fairly quickly. I don't want to be waiting until 2020 to do something about it. Okay. We have some items in our consent calendar.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Before going to consent, did you want to do the one presentation on the Voters' Choice Act item up above? Under Proclamations and Presentations, the first one there.
I missed that one. I'd like to put that off until the library staff has had a chance to get here. Okay. Sure. I don't have it here. We're not going to have any sort of a presentation on this?
Yes, we are.
We are? Okay. Please, let's go. Thank you.
We have Christine Curry from Peninsula People Power here, who will provide the presentation on the Voters' Choice Act.
Is this, this is working. Thank you for inviting me to attend your city council meeting, Mayor Penrose and city council members and members of the Half Moon Bay community. I'm sorry, I hear an echo. Do others or not? Okay. Okay. My name is Christine Curry, and I'm a member of San Francisco Peninsula People Power, which is a nonpartisan group working with the county of San Mateo to help get outreach to community groups about the Voters' Choice Act. There are about 20 other nonpartisan groups also working with the county. San Francisco Peninsula People Power, SFPPP, is nonpartisan, grassroots volunteers. We are on the peninsula in San Mateo County and some of Santa Clara County as well. It was formed originally as a project of the American Civil Liberties Union, ACLU, which is a nonpartisan civil rights group. We are guided by them, but operate independently. We are, we don't take sides in elections. We don't support candidates. We are just working to make sure that all people can vote. One of our goals is to have every eligible voter vote in every election. The Voters' Choice Act, oh, I'm sorry, I'm moving the wrong one. Okay. Okay. The Voters' Choice Act was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor in 2016. It went into effect this year. There are five counties that volunteered to start implementing the new law. It will always be volunteer. It's not required that counties do this. San Mateo County is the only one in the Bay Area. The other counties are Sacramento, Madera, Nevada, and Napa County. It started with the June election, and in our county, we exceeded voter turnout from the prior 2014 midterm in June by 17 percent, 17 points. We were the highest increase in turnout among the counties that implemented the Voters' Choice Act. We can't take credit for the act solely. People are more engaged than they may have been four years ago, but it was a significant jump. Wait, go backwards. The basic premise of the act is that there are more days and more ways to vote, so people can vote more easily. In the past, I'm going to do a little bit of contrast. If you wanted to vote by mail, most people in the county do vote by mail, but in Half Moon Bay, the number is about 50 percent. If you voted by mail in the past, you had to sign up for it in advance in order to make sure you got your ballot. Now, everybody in the county, everybody in the county automatically gets their ballot in the mail. This happened in June. There's no form to fill out. Even if you didn't ask for it, you're going to get it. There's choices on what you can do. The easiest is to vote by mail. There is no postage required in this county. That was optional. Not all counties did this. We did, so that anybody can vote their ballot as soon as they get it. It will go out next week, and it will, can be mailed anytime up until and including on Election Day. If it is received by the county by the Friday after the election, it still gets counted as long as it was postmarked on Election Day or before. You also have the option of using a secure ballot drop-off box. These are located in 31 locations around the county. There are three in this area in San Mateo. There are actually three locations, two vote centers and one ballot drop-off box. Your ballot drop-off box is at the senior center. This is inside the senior center on Main Street. That one, that will be open starting Monday, Monday or Tuesday, I guess it's Tuesday because of the holiday. There's also one in the library, and that one will also be open for 29 days. In the past, in terms of voting in person, which half of Half Moon Bay does, you had only one place to vote, your polling place. Now, they're going to be having 39 vote centers throughout the county. This is significant, though. The vote centers are larger, and they have more services, are open longer hours and more days, but there are far fewer of them. So people that are used to voting need to be informed. There were 300 polling places, over 300 polling places in 2016 in this county. Now, there are 39 vote centers. People that are used to going to the church across the street, the school down the block might be surprised on Election Day if they don't get the word that it's changed. However, the benefit is that you can vote at any of the vote centers anywhere in the county, and you can vote for any of the days they're open where, if you go to your polling place, you can only go to your polling place if something comes up, you have to work late, you're not going to be in the area that day. It can be difficult. Used to be you could only vote from 8:00 to 8:00 on Election Day. Now, you can vote in some places 29 days early. The closest one to Half Moon Bay is Tower Road, the county election office in San Mateo. That's open 29 days early. On October 27th, one of your vote centers will also open. It's at the emergency, the emergency operations centers, and that's going to be open on October 27th. And then on November 3rd, a third vote center in Montero opens at the Fairland View Elementary School. So those, and there are none in Pascodera, there are none from Montero to Pacifica, so you may get other people living on the coast wanting to come to these vote centers. The vote centers are open starting October 9th, from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. There are four of them will be available. Once the new ones, once the vote centers open, the nine additional ones, October 27th, they're open seven days a week, including weekends and holidays. So that's a big benefit for working people that work during the week. It's open 9:00 to 5:00 every single day, and then starting on November 3rd, the rest of the vote centers open, and all 39 will be open from 9:00 to 6:00, starting November 3rd, including weekends and holidays. On Election Day, they're all open, the normal polling hours, which were 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 The good news is that this slide is outdated, the vote centers. I put flyers in the back for anyone who didn't pick one up. They're not available yet in Spanish. I hope to have them soon, but the vote centers and ballot boxes are on the front and the back with the address of all of them. So they're available, they're also available at this URL or at that phone number if you want to go look at it online. And if you are voting in another vote center, even if you are voting, say, in Daly City, they will, I think that might have, this comes here, registering vote. You can register to vote online at this URL. I also put this in the back, which is a QR reader and the URL to register online to vote. 16- and 17-year-olds can pre-register, and they will automatically be able to vote when they turn 18. You can register to vote on this site up to 15 days before the election, and that's October 22nd. After that, you can still vote, register to vote at a vote center at any time, including up to Election Day. That's a big change, and it's huge, because if you show up at the polling place or the vote center and they don't have you, you can fill it out. As soon as it's verified by the county, they will count the vote. It's not something that is, it's just, they basically are checking against DMV and Social There are two additional big features of the vote centers. One is that it provides voting assistance and accessibility for handicapped people. There'll be accessible voting centers, machines at all vote centers with workers trained to assist the disabled. And in some cases, remote ballots are available online. They can't, they have to print them out, but they can use accessibility software to download the ballot, and once it's filled out, they have to drop it off for security reasons at either a drop box or in the mail or at a vote center. There will also be language assistance available at all the vote centers in person for some languages. If there are more minority languages that are not covered at that particular vote center, there'll be a language assistance hotline for people that need help with another We really need help from everybody in getting this information out. They are people that, one of the, our group is very active in June, and we printed posters at our own expense and delivered them to about 100 of the most, of the polling places in the county that were in areas like Half Moon Bay that were high, including Half Moon Bay, some of the polling places, where they have a high number of people that use them. And they were very grateful to get them because in the, some of them that said they weren't necessarily open in 2016, but that were in 2014, said people show up on Election Day. No matter how many postcards go out, the county is sending out postcards. There is advertising about this, but no matter how many, how much is done, some people don't hear about it. So whatever you can do with your community groups to get this out, that would be great. There are presentations available. If you want a copy of this, I can send you a soft copy as well. There's some hard copies, and I noticed that you had printed in the back. But if you would also like soft copies, we encourage you to use them, and also to get out the word on social media and in Twitter, if you're active on social media, which is what most of the younger people are doing now. Thank you. Is there any questions? Thank you very much.
No, I have a brief question or comment. First of all, thank you very much. I really think that we're heading in the right direction in terms of transparency and getting more people to vote. In the June election, which was also held all mail, I voted at a vote center the day before Election Day on Monday, and it took 11 days before my ballot was counted. I understand you don't work for the county, but anything you can do to get more people counting ballots as soon as possible, we really shouldn't have to wait that long to get the vote result.
One of the issues with the vote centers, and they're learning this, is that people, despite the fact they're open early, most people don't use them until the end. So if people can start using them earlier, it will save the lines and save the, luckily you were not on Election Day. There were long lines on Election Day. So I will pass that on to the county that it took that long. I'm sure they will be happy to hear that. But no, they, but at least it is counted. It just means that some, close elections may not be decided until that long afterwards, because it is counted if you did go to the vote center, and it also is counted if you mail it on Election Day and they get it by Friday. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, and I'm very happy with what you're doing with this, but it's, so what is to prevent, or how do you prevent people from just going into people's mailboxes and just grabbing a bunch of ballots and voting? Like, what is the mechanism to prevent that?
That's a good question. Well, they, even if you're voting by mail, they have to, you have to sign it. And I voted by mail for years. You have a very, you have to sign it exactly like your signature. So they do a signature match and a signature check. And some of the vote by mails, if your signature changes a lot, if you're, say, elderly, sometimes you're, like I am, sometimes your signature gets worse over time, you really want to check at this URL to be sure you're still registered, and perhaps update your signature. Re-register. This will allow you, I did go, actually, it was through the DMV. I had to, I went in to get my real ID, and it's only when you renew. There's a new law also that you're automatically registered to vote at the DMZ unless you opt out, but you have to go in to refill, renew your driver's license or apply for a new one. It's only driver's license. And I just updated it and did it again anyway, but it's important. So as an example, the signature issue, if it's not, if it's not a good match, it could be rejected. Anybody else?
If someone does not have a driver's license, what do they, and they don't have a Social Security card?
If they have a California non-driver ID, that counts. If they don't have a driver's license or a Social Security card or a non-driver ID, they have to, they will have to provide multiple sources of other ID at the vote center. There's a list on the Secretary of State website of, for first-time voters, there's a section there on acceptable ID, like military ID. I can't remember, I don't have it with me, and I don't remember them all off the top of my head, but there are an additional number of IDs. Online, you need to have both. We do a lot of paper registration. You don't need both for paper. You need either one or the other. The county then will check with Social Security or the DMV. If there's any question, if you put, there's a place on the form to add your email or phone number, and they say they call or email you, so it might be faster. Someone is going into the vote center and has neither of those pieces of ID, they need to have several pieces of the alternative IDs.
And the non-driver DMV card is obtained through a visit to the DMV office?
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Sure.
Council, I did want to add that beginning on Tuesday, October 9th, there will be a ballot drop box located at City Hall, as well as the senior center, and I believe the library. And then at the city's elections night out event on October 30th, there will be a ballot drop box from 5:00 to 8:00 during the event time, as well as county staff to register anyone to vote who needs to. And then to touch on Vice Mayor Warback's question, between the motor voter law and also the increased voter turnout coupled with the all-male ballot election, the county experienced a greater influx of ballots to count than normal, but they have been working on procedures to improve that for November. but they have been working on procedures to improve that for November.
Also, the, I don't know how the county was affected, but statewide, the preregistration, which I think is new, the 16- and 17-year-olds. We registered 200,000 people statewide that were 16 and 17. Half of them turned 18. So I don't know if that's by June, but by November, they turned 18. And our group is, we contacted the Ann Campbell's office and we offered all high schools and we're doing it again right now. There are multiple schools throughout this county, both public and private, are holding government class. Teachers are holding events. We're doing it at the, at the lunch hour. We've been to the community colleges. But we're making, and others are making a huge event, a huge effort to get new voters, especially the younger voters. And the preregistration helps a lot. So I think we're doing a good job in California of expanding voting.
Well, thank you very much. That was a very informative presentation. And you said in the back you had some hard copies.
Yes, hard copies, thank you to Jessica. I think she printed them out of the presentation. And then there are hard copies of the, of these, the vote center and ballot box in English. There's also some handout cards. One side is Spanish, the other is English. It kind of summarizes. So if somebody just wants to take a quick reminder of it, they can take those. I'm going to leave them. So, and the county has more available. If you decide you're going to have an event. This is from the county, so are the handout cards. The Spanish ones are supposed to come out whenever, they just, I don't have a date for it yet. I was hoping to have them by next week. But the printer they're using is fairly slow. I want to add that, however, that Jessica really was instrumental in suggesting that we, that we distribute these flyers to Cabrillo schools. And working with Jessica and the school district, they're planning to send out the vote center drop-off box flyers in English and Spanish as well as those handout cards. And we're just waiting on the final, getting that last Spanish flyer together. I'm expecting we'll be able to deliver it sometime next week to all the schools. They want it separated by packets and for each of the classrooms. The elementary school students will all get flyers to go home. And then there will be about 100 additional copies in the office in the middle and high schools. Schools don't, I guess, send flyers home with kids at that age. So at least there's some effort. And, you know, frankly, that's a great, and the elementary school, I think most parents read the flyers the kids bring home. So hopefully, they'll see it.
Thank you. And thank you, Jessica, for doing that for us. It might be a great idea to get some of them at our community meeting on October 23rd, both in Spanish and in English. Great, thanks.
Let you know, if you need more, as of today, Tower Road has all of them available except the Spanish. So if you need to get more than what I've left you and don't want to print them, maybe you could go there and get some. And I've also, I'm going to get clean copies of a couple of them that weren't so clean, so you can print them if you'd like to.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody need anything pulled?
I don't need anything pulled, but I have to recuse myself on 1B. And otherwise, I'm happy to approve the rest.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve 1A, 1C, 1D?
Hold it. I move that we adopt the consent calendar. Item 1A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. 1C, resolution in opposition of Proposition 6, which would repeal the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. 1D, final acceptance for the Correa Street Reconstruction Project or Project 0607. Item 1E, agreement amendment with Crosby Group, Inc. for design and architectural support for the Ted Edcock Community Center Restroom and Kitchen Renovation Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then, Adam, if you'll excuse?
I just wanted to clarify that for items that are on the consent calendar, Councilmember Eisen does not actually need to leave the room. He just needs to, right, he just wouldn't vote on this item.
Okay, can I have a motion on item 1B? I move that we adopt an ordinance replacing Chapter 18.33, second dwelling units and amending related provisions of the zoning and subdivision titles of the Hafman Bay Municipal Code, second reading. In favor? Aye. Aye. Motion's passed. Okay, we're going to move on to our ordinance regulating smoking. We have an ordinance regulating smoking in certain places and the sale of tobacco products.
Yes, I'll be giving the presentation this evening. So you'll remember this item from August 21st as well as the September 6th meeting. So just to bring us up to speed, I'm going to keep this presentation fairly short because you've been over the ordinance in great detail and there are just a few changes that were, that were made to the draft. So as background, the councils met a number of times over this course of this year. Let's talk about the smoking ordinance and the tobacco retailers ordinance. You provided policy direction on February 6th. You, the major policy direction there was to go out and get some community input and that was in the form of two surveys. So in your May 15th meeting, you considered the results of those surveys. And then staff was directed to go ahead and draft up the ordinance. That ordinance was considered at your August 21st meeting. And you'll recall, you considered two versions of the ordinance with respect to how it treats multi-unit housing and considered the version that would ban smoking in the individual units as well as the version that would only be in the common areas. And council provided direction that it was, the majority of you were in favor of banning smoking in the individual units. At the September 6th meeting, council provided further direction to that ordinance. And just because of how ordinances work, you can't actually make substantive changes at the second reading. Staff went back and redrafted the ordinance in consideration of basically two, two pieces of policy input. The first was that the council directed the ordinance to be broadened to include the ban on smoking on sidewalks. And there was some discussion about, well, in Hafman Bay, there are some parts of the city that don't actually have sidewalks. And so I worked on that language to include walkways as well to be sort of even-handed in how it affects the neighborhoods. The council also provided direction to include an exception in the multifamily individual units for use of medical cannabis via electronic smoking devices. So those two items are in the draft before you. And just for ease of reading, they're in the underlined language so you can see the changes that were made. Let's see, I guess I'll, so this is a sort of a summary of what outdoor areas where smoking is already prohibited or what was prohibited in the August 21st draft. And the new language is that the ordinance would ban smoking on public sidewalks, walkways, parkways, curbs, and gutters. And I will say that there are other cities who have taken, taken this approach. My research indicates there are a little over 40 cities that have banned smoking on sidewalks in some or all portions of the city, including here in San Mateo County. That was in the staff report, but I believe it was Daly City, Foster City, and maybe one other as well. And that wasn't necessarily in the, all parts of the sidewalks, but in certain areas in the city. All right, and so then the second change that is presented for you is an exception for medical cannabis via electronic smoking devices. And there are a number of jurisdictions that have included this exception in their smoking ordinances. And I was, I did consider the city of Santa Rosa, which actually does include an exception just like this one for medical cannabis via an electronic smoking device. So our language that is presented here is parallel with, with Santa Rosa. I did want to mention that the, or I, so to say that, we moved on to this slide, the tobacco retailer permitting requirement remains the same from your August 21st draft. No changes there. The city's received a little bit of, well, some additional correspondence related to the smoking ordinance. And I wanted to just mention two items that came in just today from the American Mon Association. And then there's another correspondence received from the Americans for Non Smoking Rights. And that letter actually prompted me to want to suggest one additional edit to the ordinance. There was a comment that the ordinance was not clear in that, or could be, could be made more clear, to state that any designated smoking area in multifamily needed to be outside. There could be, there's some ambiguity that a designated smoking area could be inside. And I don't think that was the intent of the council. So I would propose a slight edit to Section 7.50.040H, which I can read into the record if you're agreeable, that we really only want to have designated smoking areas be outside. All right. And I would say this letter did also take exception to the medical cannabis exception in this version of the ordinance. All right, and so that is, that is it for my presentation. In terms of, of stuff tonight, you do need to open and hold a public hearing and then provide additional direction and consider the first reading.
I have one question about the outdoor smoking being allowed in multi-unit housings. If there is a separate building that is not, does not share walls or ventilation with the rest of the apartment complex, could that be included as well? Yeah, you know, somebody has, they build a little room for their smokers.
So right now, I would, let's see, have to go back to the text of the ordinance, but I believe that that would not be allowed because basically the common areas is defined rather broadly to include enclosed areas that can be accessed, basically be accessed by anyone at the, at the residence. So that would, I guess, need to be addressed by a separate amendment to the ordinance if there are such.
Right. I don't know, I'm just curious. Okay, thank you. All right, we have one public speaker on this, Francesca Lomaton.
Good evening, council members. My name is Francesca Lomaton and I am with San Mateo County Health's Tobacco Prevention Program. And we staff the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. In the proposed ordinance under Section 7.50.060, Smoking Permitted, Section C, there is currently an exemption for medical cannabis vaping in multi-unit housing. We want to bring to your attention that California State Law's Health and Safety Code, Sections 11362.3 and 11362.79, states that smoking cannabis is prohibited wherever smoking tobacco is prohibited. Section 11362.3's definition of smoke also includes the use of an electronic smoking device. The California Department of Public Health also has a fact sheet titled Medicinal Use Cannabis that includes information on where you can use medicinal cannabis. The fact sheet says that even with a current qualifying physician's recommendation or a valid county-issued medical marijuana identification card, there are limits on where you can use medicinal cannabis. The fact sheet lists a number of restrictions, including you cannot smoke cannabis in places where tobacco is prohibited. Therefore, the Tobacco Education Coalition's interpretation of state law is that wherever tobacco smoking or vaping is prohibited, cannabis smoking or vaping, including medical cannabis, is also prohibited. For your convenience, I have copies of the Health and Safety Codes and the California Department of Public Health fact sheet here for city staff and the city council that I can distribute. Thank you.
The public hearing is open. Staff have any, council have anything to say? We will close the public hearing.
The clear intent of the council was to allow people who actually needed medical cannabis, and I think there's abundance of evidence that medical cannabis for people who need it is really helpful to their health. Do you have a suggestion for how we can implement what is the clear intention of the council at the time that we debated this?
So I did research this issue that was raised this evening because, was raised to me at the prior meeting. And I don't see any legal reason that the county couldn't, that the city couldn't define smoke to, well, you define smoke the same, but you've basically created an exception. Now, that may be a policy reason one way or the other. The letter that you received today argues that, well, it's very hard to enforce the difference between what vapors from tobacco versus vapors from cannabis and how do you know whether the person's using it medically or recreationally. So I think that is perhaps a larger, a larger challenge. But in terms of the definition, I'm comfortable proceeding with the definition in the ordinance before you.
So just to be clear, the draft ordinance would allow medical cannabis vaping in multi-unit dwelling private space. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I move that the council adopt an ordinance of the city of Hafman Bay, California, adding Chapter 7.50 and 7.60, regulating smoking in certain places and sale of tobacco products to Title 7 of the Hafman Bay Municipal Code and finding that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And further, that we approve an amendment clarifying that designated smoking areas in multi-unit, multifamily dwelling units is intended to be outside only.
And I will just, if you don't mind, just read that into the record because it's only a couple of words here. This is in, let's see, Section 7.50.040H, where the ordinance agreed, "All new leases and lease renewals shall include a clause prohibiting smoking in all areas of the complex, including inside individual units and on private balconies or patios, but accepting any outdoor designated smoking areas."
Second.
All in favor? I think we need a roll call for this.
Councilmember Eisen?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick? Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we now have moved up to resolutions and staff reports. I'd like to take Item 3C before 3A and 3B. And I'd like to follow that, if we could, with our proclamation and presentation to the library.
So we don't have a staff presentation for 3C? Okay, so I don't have a staff presentation for 3C. This item is the consideration of the appointment of Robert Nispit as city manager and implorable of the employment agreement. I'll be giving the staff presentation, including-- So as you know, the city has utilized the services of interim city manager on my left since January, and the city requires the appointment of a permanent city manager as specified by the municipal code. The city has met in closed session on several occasions over the summer to consider prospective candidates, to interview candidates, and to provide direction to staff and its labor negotiator, Paul Kamora, regarding contract negotiations. And the result of that process is the attached proposed agreement that's for the council's consideration this evening. Mister, I wanted to note that Mr. Nisbet is here this evening and available to answer questions and introduce himself. His resume is attached to the staff report. He can speak for himself, but he has over 25 years of professional management experience, including five as an assistant general manager for the East Bay Regional Park District, as well as seven years as public works director for the City of Carpinteria, and 12 years working for the County of Santa Barbara. I do want to describe the key terms of the contract, which is required to be oral reported by law. So key terms are that the start date would be October 29. The contract is for a three-year term concluding on October 29, 2021. Obviously, that doesn't prohibit the parties from renegotiating, but it is a three-year contract term. The base salary is $215,000 per year with no automatic compensation increase. There would be a one-time $10,000 relocation assistance to allow Mr. Nisbet to, an allowance basically to relocate to the coast side. There'd be an automobile allowance of $500 per month, $8,500 annual contribution to a 457 retirement plan, and the same medical benefits as available to other city employees, and the same CalPERS retirement benefits as paid to other management employees. The contract includes no severance benefits in the event of termination for cause, but in the event of involuntary termination, the severance benefit would be up to six months of base salary. Of course, if there's less time left in the contract, then it would be less than six months, and the city manager may resign with 30 days' notice. So those are basically the key terms, and if the council wishes to move forward with the appointment, obviously following any public comment, it may move the staff recommendation, which includes the resolution and the employment agreement.
I don't see any blue cards for public comment, so I will entertain a motion. I move that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Half Moon Bay, appointing Robert Nisbet as city manager and approving the employment agreement.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please? Just one of them, just brief comments. I think that the council has made a great choice here, and what is really thrilling to me is that we have an outstanding team in City Hall in place already, and that Mr. Nisbet will be a great complement to that. So I think the pieces are falling into place for a very professionally managed and exciting city hall. So I'd like to move to the vote and then have Mr. Nisbet come up and introduce himself.
Councilmember Eisen?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhabat?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I ask Mr. Nisbet to please come up to the microphone? Congratulations, we're very excited.
I go by Bob. And truly, it's an honor to be appointed as the next city manager for the City of Half Moon Bay. It really is a dream come true for me. I'm just really happy to get going and hit the ground running on the 29th, which is only less than four weeks away. So I will be tying up some loose ends at my current job at the East Bay Regional Park District and doing some logistical things, and I just look forward to coming to the community and getting to know the community and getting started. It'll be my privilege to serve your council, to serve with the dedicated and professional staff, and to serve the citizens of Half Moon Bay. I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Be happy to ask for any questions.
I don't think we have a lot of questions for you, we're just tickled.
Thanks for having me tonight.
And David, we are going to miss you, but we'll tell you that next time. You've been great. There will be a transition period where David will be available and to help Bob with the transition and make sure everything goes smoothly so there'll be minimal disruption. Okay, we're going to move on to the proclamation for the library staff. Could we ask the library staff to please come up to the podium? Okay, I am here with Claire Tutan from the MidCoast Community Council. This is a joint presentation and joint proclamation from all of us here on the coast side to all of you. I'm going to read a little bit from the proclamation. It's very long, so I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's long. Whereas the Half Moon Bay Library serves the City of Half Moon Bay and the entire coast side community, offering world-class service, an ever-expanding collection of materials and technology, an exciting array of activities and experiences, and continuous opportunities to community members to learn, explore, and discover. Therefore, be it known that the City Council of Half Moon Bay and the MidCoast Community Council do hereby honor and recognize the staff of the Half Moon Bay Library, past, present, and future, for their enthusiastic, tireless efforts to serve the coast side community, which they do with excitement, energy, humor, and devotion to the principles and values of library service, and hereby dedicates to them the Half Moon Bay Library Staff Area with gratitude, great appreciation, and best wishes.
I just have a couple of brief remarks. I'm Claire Tutan, I'm vice chair of the MidCoast Community Council. For those who don't know us, we're a elected, publicly-elected advisory body representing the communities between Montero and Miramar. I'm happy to present this celebration of the newest, exciting chapter in the life of our library. All of us have contributed to this day, and all of us enjoy its services. Not much happens locally without the library staff being involved. In addition, I'm happy to be able to present this jointly with the Half Moon Bay City Council. Churchill once described the US and Britain as "two communities divided by a common language." Sometimes I think the coast side is many communities divided by a common highway. I am hopeful that this resolution will lead to many more civic partnerships between Half Moon Bay and the MidCoast. So congratulations to everyone, and I hope you'll enjoy our celebration.
Thank you. And here are two plaques, one of them's for a wall and the other one's for a desk. I'm not sure.
Oh, wow.
Thank you. Would you like to say a couple of words? Just tell us how many people are now coming to the library and how many came before the new library was built.
So let's see. Well, we're missing about half of our staff right now because they're still at the library closing it up, but they will be over shortly. So we are seeing over 1,000 people visiting the library on just a regular day, and then in the old library, we were about 480 per day, so we've more than doubled.[1229.01][1229.01](applause) But it's been, yeah, it's been really wonderful, this process of bringing a library to the coast side, and just seeing the patrons' faces, just the community member just so excited to see this space and enjoy this space. And it's been wonderful doing this with the library staff, you know, past and present, and then, and some of our recent hires as well. So, thank you so much.[1260.01][1260.01](applause)
We're going to take a quick break so that we can go over to the table over here and eat. How's that?[1285.08]
You like that intro? You're awesome.
Uh, no, but... The meeting has re-adjourned, so everyone, please take your seats.
You don't re-adjourn.
Yes, I do. I do whatever I want to do. I'm the mayor.
She can do whatever she wants.
Take your seats, please. Okay, we are moving on to Highway 1 South, Main Street Gateway Signage and Landscaping.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm Jill Ikas with your Community Development Department, and I'm very pleased to be able to introduce this item tonight. This is the Half Moon Bay South Gateway Landscaping and Signage Proposal. It is coordinated with the already-approved signalization improvement at South Main Street, Highway 1, and Higgins Canyon Road. The project is in design development, and to coordinate the signage and landscaping, the city has hired Kekuchi and Associates, our local landscape architecture firm, to give us a very nice design with local context. The reason why we're here is we just saw the Planning Commission with this in study session. They provided some feedback about the design. It was very well received. We wanted to make sure that we check in with you, check on your comfort level with it before we continue with design details, because as soon as we do that, we'll be going back to the Planning Commission for a coastal development permit and then wrapping up the engineering designs that are being reviewed by Caltrans. So with that, I will turn this over to Tom Conroy.
Thanks, Jill. Good evening, council members, city staff. Before we begin, I want to just thank staff through the council, both planning and public works and engineering staff have all been a really great team. Because we're dealing with design and design code issues, as well as Caltrans and traffic alignment code issues, there's a lot of layers. And staff has been really great to work with, so thank you to Jill, and Maz, and John, too, for all their help. We were very excited to get a call from the city to ask for some design input on this intersection. We, after some initial brainstorming sessions, we focused on these three goals. Thank you. Kind of set out with three goals that we wanted to achieve. One was to create a sense of entry to Half Moon Bay. Right now, Half Moon Bay kind of runs on a continuum. There's not really a distinct start and a distinct stop to Half Moon Bay. And we've all heard the anecdotes from people who have visited Half Moon Bay and said, "I didn't know where downtown was. I thought it was Safeway and Burger King, and that was it." And so having some, some sort of iconic entry statement seemed like a necessary step to begin to define the limits of our town, even if not the literal limits, but the functional limits, the downtown core. Our second goal was to respect the historic alignment of Highway 1. As you know, I'm sure, Highway 1 used to go right down Main Street and then continue on up north. And while we are, the new alignment of these streets and the signalization, that's all fixed, we didn't want the original alignment to be forgotten. And so we added some aspects to the design that hopefully emphasized that historic alignment. And finally, our third goal was to tie these first two goals together, in, together into the, to visually, I'm sorry, to visually connect these improvements to town and to connect the new improvements to the areas on Highway 92 and Highway 1 that have recently gone new alignments and had new plantings done. We want these improvements to have a sense of immediate connection, and so by using the same sort of design language throughout, we hope to be able to achieve that. And so with, working with staff, we developed this concept plan. And is the laser?
I think so.
That one right there?
Yes. But they can't see it.
Oh, you can't see it? Okay, well, for the benefit of everybody else. So, the sense of entry, this first goal, we wanted to bracket this intersection, and so from the outside, we worked, we worked from the outside in. So the first element is this row of Metro Sideros trees. These are existing trees. This is the fire station for orientation purposes. These are existing trees, and for about the first half-mile of South Main Street, those are the primary street tree on both sides of the road. And so we continued that line all the way out, and we brought the line on the other side of Main Street around the corner. And so you get this, this kind of funnel into Main Street. The line that comes out from the east end of the street and out to Highway 1, that's, that's really there to give the impression that Main Street is continuing out. That's where our connection to the historic alignment really comes in. And I've got some photo simulations that I'll show you as we get through there, and you can see how that, how that works out. So the second, you know, we've got this first bracket of, you know, tall trees, 30-to-40-foot tall street trees. And then we start going in, and we transition down from this tall tree scale down to the pedestrian and the vehicular scale. And those end up, and that bracketing ends up with these two signs on either side of the Main Street connection. Behind those signs, those walls, are bermed planters. So we've got planting, these swaths of plantings that weave in and out across the medians and all the way onto the other side of the highway. And they, behind these signs, rise these berms. So the planting continues off, and you have this layered, soft approach into town with these subtle landforms that connect back to the landform, the topography changes that were done on the Highway 1 medians leading from, between Kelly and North Main Street.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
The, the, the part, I guess, on the left side of this is the also private land?
Yes. This here, you can kind of make it out, just underneath these trees, this, this is the limits of the L.C. Smith property, the Ford, Jameson Ford property, right there. And what you can see here, this is the pathway that goes out and the existing sculpture that the, that's out there right now.
Where's the pot sticker?
Right there.
Okay.
And has he, has, have we talked, have we vetted this through with them for just approval? Or how do we engage?
So, just a few notes. The proposed gateway and landscaping that you're seeing here is all on public city lands. None of it is on private property. The owner of the private property behind, however, has seen all of this. He attended the presentation to the Planning Commission, so everybody's up to speed.
Okay. Let's, let's move up a bit here, and I want to get into detail on these signs. So there are two signs. Each one of them are approximately 50 feet wide by about eight feet tall. They curve both away, it's from the intersection, as well as curving from bottom up to top. This helps, you know, actually, from here, you can see the trees behind. There's some smaller trees and shrubs on the planted berm behind the wall, and then the wall, sign walls themselves. Just off to the right, this little guy, that's a scale figure giving you, just a sense of scale on the sign. And you can begin to see the, the transition from the tall trees down to the human and pedestrian scale level as we get closer to the intersection. Our main inspiration for these, even though we do have a half-moon or crescent moon shape out of them, we didn't choose that as a gimmick, but it really came out of looking at the, the mountains, the coastal hills, as well as the bluffs. You could see this, this sort of weathered sandstone approach, or this weathered sandstone that we have up and down the coast. And that's what we tried to accomplish. This is looking closely at the south-facing, the northernmost sign, the one that faces south. And you can kind of pick out, there are these wave gradations through there. I don't know if the, the slide pictures, shows it as well as we'd like it to be, but what we're picturing here is a darker to light, using probably different shades of concrete, maybe the heavy sand blast, so we get some of that. maybe the heavy sandblasts, so we get some of that coastal bluff appearance to it, that weathered appearance, but also have a presence to it so that it feels established, it feels significant, it feels monumental, like you really want out of a gateway sign like this.
Question?
Yeah.
Sorry. The, just in terms of like graffiti aspect?
I was thinking about that, too.
How easy is it? I have no idea what we're talking about entirely, what type of substance we're talking about, but how easy would it be to kind of deal with that if somebody were to?
Yeah, there are, there are many anti-graffiti coating products that are used, especially for ceiling concrete. I think the city has used that on other projects here in town. If I remember correctly, the stage at McDooster Plaza and possibly the seat walls had that on there, too. And if there has been any graffiti sprayed or marked on there, it hasn't lasted very long. It's come up pretty quickly.
Can I always put a webcam in there?
Yeah, or an electric shock.
Yeah.
So as I said, this is the south-facing sign. This is the real true gateway. This is the Half Moon Bay sign. The font is still to be worked on. We picked this font because it connected to the other wayfinding signage that has been approved and installed over the last few years. We're showing the city logo on there. That may or may not be appropriate, but conceptually, we wanted to make it clear that this was the entrance, this is the gateway. The north-facing sign on the south end is pointing to the historic downtown. This could say historic Main Street, but what we really wanted to accomplish was some level of wayfinding, say, this is how you get to South Main Street. And the second half, on the right-hand side, is this location for movable or changeable event signage. It might say Pumpkin Festival for September through October. After that, it might go into Night of Lights, first weekend in December, and other things. Maybe it changes six or eight times a year, and the city would have some level of specifications for those who wanted to put a temporary event sign up, that it would fit in this location without too much work.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
So is lighting anticipated to highlight the signage at night?
Definitely, definitely. At this stage, we've kept the specifics on the lighting vague. We haven't worked through that yet. But our goal would be to light it in as understated a way as possible that still makes the signs and the text readable. It's likely that with the signalization, there will be the Caltrans typical intersection downlights, so these won't be dark no matter what, but having some sort of, possibly, you know, LED strips at the bottom that just give it a light wash, a light glow, and possibly even accentuate some of that banding, that wave banding throughout the sign.
When you talk about wave banding, are you talking about physical up and down, or you're just talking about changing color?
Just changing color.
Okay.
Just changing color, and possibly texture.
Okay.
But just, just across the face of the sign.
Right. It's not going to do this, though.
No, no, no. The signs themselves, the faces of the signs are vertical. They just curve back and from up, from down to up and back again. So with these concepts, with the concept plan and the elevations of these signs, we built a pretty rudimentary model that started citing these elements into the actual landscape. And this is, this is pretty crude, and we did this pretty quickly, but we think it was an effective tool to communicate both the design intent and to use for our photo simulations. We didn't model all of the plant material. I just want, I don't want anybody to think that we're planting lawn over all of this. The plant material will probably be something similar to what has been used successfully on the highway medians, on Highway One and Highway 92 medians. As we get closer to the ground plane, you begin to see the landforms. You can see how these, the signs are set back from the intersection to still maintain visibility for turning, the right and left turns, but are also prominent enough that you will see them as you approach the intersection from both directions. These are the existing conditions. This is about 100 yards south of the turnoff right now, and with our model, we dropped the model, and you can begin to see what this may look like as we go forward. Though the row of, this is, here's Main Street here, the row of street trees continues out on the right, and it wraps around on the left, and really begins to get this visual funnel heading into Main Street, this, you know, don't forget about Main Street, even though you're probably going to be driving up on Highway One. The second view is a little bit closer and a little bit more aligned with northbound one when we dropped in the model. You can see how, you really can start picking up the scaling here, where we're going from the coastal cliffs to the street tree level, to the lower shrub level, and then down to the sign level, and that human and pedestrian scale. You can also begin to pick up some of these shapes where we're kind of picking up on the hill shapes with the signs themselves.
The walkways, too, kind of.
Definitely, yeah. The walkways underlaid. Yeah, and we've moved the sidewalks in, I think, eight or 10 feet from the curb, so that when the planting fills in, there's going to be even more separation for pedestrian and bike and ped safety. This is across Higgins looking east, and when we put the model in, you can see how it really funnels you, in this case, towards both directions, both Higgins or Highway One, but nobody's really going to be sitting in this direction, looking to go straight And here, this is southbound, I'm about even, this photograph's taken from about even with the fire station, and here you can see with the new planted median and the north-facing sign and the trees beyond that. And you can still see the Johnson House off over here. So that's the extent of the preliminary design work that we did for this first pass. Some of the council members and staff may recall that about four years ago, the city worked with a sign consultant to develop a series of wayfinding and directional signs, and included in that packet were a couple of concepts of a road-spanning archway sign. And we wanted to, we put those in the model, too, even though this project doesn't propose putting that in right now. I know the Planning Commission, in particular, wanted another crack at those signs, but we put those in the model. I brought them up here just to refresh everybody's memory on what these signs were. We wanted to put them in here to show you that none of these improvements that we're proposing tonight preclude any future archway sign like this. There's this pretty good location right back here, where this purple stripe is, for putting in one of those arch signs. And when we put it in the model, you can see how it's still quite visible and adds another level of interest and attraction for motorists coming up from the south and looking from the other direction. You can see that it does do, it does make that Main Street entrance a little bit more prominent. But again, that's not, not for tonight, but it's definitely worth the future consideration.
I think that's a good approach.
Thanks.
Good. Any questions?
I have a few. I love it. I really think that if we had this kind of gateway, both on Highway 92 and on the north side of the city, it would be wonderful. That's neither, that's not any comment about what you're proposing, I'm just saying that where I'm coming from. I was really upset when the so-called gateway on Highway 92 was done the way it was done. That's neither here nor there. I have a couple of comments that I wrote down. "The existing Half Moon sculpture can be retained with this design, although it's somewhat obscured by trees and less visible. Ultimately, it could be phased out. Phase it out, okay? I've heard from constituents many descriptions of what that sign is, and none of them are repeatable in a public forum, but no, that's a terrible sculpture, no offense to the sculpture person, and really, it doesn't belong there." The sidewalks that you have illustrated, do they continue up all the way on Main Street so that you could walk all the way?
We, we're showing the sidewalk continuing to the project limits. I think any public sidewalk that, there's already a sidewalk on the east side. Any sidewalk on the west side is out of our scope and is probably more, better found in conjunction with any work that is to be done on that property.
Okay. I mean, I'm proposing that that's important, that pedestrians have that ability on both sides of Main Street. I love the trees. I really love the trees, and I just want to commend you for putting them in. I don't love the font on the two signs and the rationale that it should match the crappy existing, what's the word? You know, wayfinding, yeah. No, I, just like, I pretty much detest the existing wayfinding streets, signs, and to try to match them is crazy, in my humble opinion. I think the font should be even bigger than what you have, and I think it should be more interesting than what you have, but I do love the existence of the signs, and I think they're a really good way to enter the south end of town. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
I've already mentioned to them offline that I love the presence of the trees, but I don't like that particular tree species, but we're kind of stuck with it because that's what's along Main Street, so I'm going to keep it. But I really love the design, and I think it very carefully fits into the context as you've described. And I agree with Harvey, I think maybe some font modifications, or, you know, just play with it and see, maybe it's a little more historical some kind, Spanish town, I don't know, but I think that could benefit from some playing around. Other than that, I like the use of the native plants and tying in with the medians, and I'd like to see us finish the medians that we have in those plantings. That's kind of an aside as well. I think that's on our radar, but I think you've done a great job. I, too, would like to retire the sculpture that's there, and I think there's probably several others in town that maybe we have a sculpture museum for retired sculpture, maybe in the historical barn, you know what it's like?
I'll show somebody with one.
Right. But I just want to say, great job. Really pleased. Thank you.
Yeah, I have one question. If you could go back to the slide that's in bird's eye view of the intersection, the first slide. Well, any of these will do. Where does the, the post property is along Higgins, isn't it? And how far down does it come?
I'd probably show the site plan. So the, I know you can't see this, the row of trees that extend out, the continuation of that line, the back, this dashed line right here, that's the limits of the post property, and I believe it goes out to the center line of Higgins all the way back.
And don't they have plans to put a pathway along there? Isn't, there's something like that in the works? Because it would be nice to have it continue to the sidewalk.
We anticipated that there would be a path from this intersection towards the Johnson House, and we also anticipated that at some level of development on the L.C. Smith property, that there would be a pathway along there. And it kind of got lost in the rendering, but you can see dashed lines and an arrowhead snaking out here, as well as dashed lines and an arrowhead coming out here. So we anticipated that, but those are outside of the scope of project. But they're certainly possible.
I think it'd be compatible.
Absolutely.
The other thing I wanted to say was that I love the design. I think it's just wonderful. It's understated, and it's, it's, it's got weight to it. It's, you said, used the word monumental. It is. It's a monument. I wouldn't even mind seeing it a little larger. I wouldn't want to see it any smaller or any shorter.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. As we will look at that in all decisions, as we move through the design development phase.
I agree with the mayor on the issue of the post trail. Conceivably, in combination with, you know, their connected trail from their properties in the hills, there's potential economic development opportunity there with that connection, Bay Ridge Trail ultimately, you know, all the way down to the ocean. So I might want to just have a meeting with posts and just show them, perhaps Jill alone or with Tom, just to, you know, get a reaction, but I think they'll think it's great, but it helped to coordinate early, I think, so that's what I would do.
Just to respond quickly on that, we get to see posts quite often, so it's great, and we will do that for sure. But the Seminole County Trails Master Plan includes the Higgins Canyon Road and trail, and I don't know what it's going to be exactly like yet, but it's definitely a priority connection. And I just wanted to note on that connection around the frontage of the L.C. Smith property, the intention there is that that would be the Class One East Side Parallel Trail that you've talked about before. Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I'm very excited. And this goes back to planning now?
That's right. Now, we're going to take a look at your comments, go back and look at theirs, and make some revisions. We may also do some mocking up out in the field. You know, it's, they're big, and the intersection's huge, so making that bridge, the scale gap between a highway and a human who's going to cross the highway was brilliantly done, and it's going to take some finesse to make sure their place is right. So we're going to do a lot of work in the field to make sure it's what you expect.
Great. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
We're moving on to item 3B, pavement management and complete streets, study session number
Thank you for the last item as well. But we assumed you'd like Jill and Tom better than us, too, so we just deferred to them, and they did great. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we are finally here with study session number two. I do apologize. We've been quite busy and have been wanting to come back with this follow-up study session, and finally, we're here. I think it'll be informative, and we're hopeful that we can start the dialogue and conversation about direction toward the future, as we particularly look at the coming year's capital improvements program and budget, and how we develop and deal with our new capital improvements program and budget, and how we develop and deal with our new and additional areas of need with regard to streets, complete streets, green infrastructure, and all of those, those factors. So in, in that regard, I also want to thank the Mobility Subcommittee for meeting with us and having a very good conversation. This kicked us forward also into many of the items that we're going to talk about today. And we see the Mobility Subcommittee, as well as the Finance Subcommittee, being major partners in, separately, but in similar paths, to help us through some of these issues as we look at how to fund things. And thank you also for your support, I think, of the item on Proposition 6. And we'll talk a little bit to that for the public to understand why that's so important. And with that, I will turn over to the city engineer, Maz. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So tonight, study session, street study session number two. It's been a little while. The last meeting we had was in March of 20th this year, so I have a very brief overview of some of those elements, our pavement management system, as well as our complete streets items, and talk a little bit about our current projects. And then we'll jump right into the, the meat of our conversation tonight, which is looking at funding prioritization and next steps. So just a couple of objectives. We want to inform, invite, and initiate. We want to inform the city council and community, invite comments from stakeholders, residents, business owners, and initiate this discussion for, for potential direction and how we're going to move forward on, in this intricate funding strategy. So the City of Half Moon Bay's roadway network, we have approximately 27 centerline miles of pavement through, through the city. What that means, so that, that's irregardless of width of the street, that's just considering the length of it, so you have obviously some streets wider than others. We mentioned last time that there was a significant cost. It's one of the largest assets the city, asset and liability that the city has. About, the total reconstruction cost is about $55 million, and that cost is only for pavement. We're not, that doesn't include any sidewalk replacement, new sidewalks, it's strictly new pavement sections.
$54 million just for the street?
Just for the pavement of the street.
Okay.
Correct.
The blacktop asphalt.
Correct. A little bit on the pavement condition index. So we are, the City of Half Moon Bay is in the good range. We have a PCI of 65. This was calculated back in April of 2016. The Bay Area average is 66. And just a quick note that we are going to be working with MTC this coming winter to look at updating our study. You've seen quite a bit of, I think folks have seen quite a bit of construction and improvements moving forward with the slurries from PG&E, some of the paving reconstruction projects that we've been working on recently. And we, so we expect that number to go up. How much, we'll see, but we'll start that process this winter. Now, how did those get in there? So these are a couple of pictures from Magnolia Street. So on the left, you can see this, the construction, the contractor was, was mobilized. This is, this picture was taken about a month ago, and the one on the right was taken this afternoon, where you, and this is prior to the striping, but the pavement's been in place. The, this was an interesting project in, in, in that we, we did a full-depth reclamation, so essentially the, the soil underneath the asphalt section, so it was ground up, it was mixed with cement and lime, which dried it out and hardened it, and then it was compacted to be, essentially create that base layer, and then we had a three-inch asphalt placed on the top of that. And so that project is moving forward. Another component of that one was the Church Street. This is the end of Church Street, past Mill. We have, on the left, you see the before. This is, these are all the broken segments of asphalt, and on the right, you see right after paving, before striping. So that project is moving forward, and we anticipate that project to be complete by the end of the calendar year. We will be taking a couple of weeks where we're going out of the downtown area with the October festivities, and then we'll be wrapping that up by the end of the year.
Pumpkin Fest.
Pumpkin Festival. The complete streets component, just wanted to touch on this a little bit. So this, we, we've gotten some great new pictures to incorporate into our slide from our recent projects. So you can see our brand-new library in the back-left side of this, this photo, and in the front, you see the buyer retention that was put in as part of the CCAG grant for Safe Routes to School and Green Infrastructure. So just a little background on complete streets. So essentially, a complete street is a road for all users, taking into account and consideration for pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles, and others, including transit riders. Some of the components we have listed here, you know, such as pathways and sidewalks, bike lanes, routes, special bus lanes, these are just some of the, some of the components that you see in complete street implementation throughout. Not, not saying that this is what would fit for every one of our streets, but these are just some of the listed items that you look at when you're, when you're implementing complete street components. We also have, another major component of complete streets is also in the integration of green improvements, basically incorporating stormwater runoff retention areas to reduce that impact of our, into our public storm drain system, which ultimately leads to the Complete streets implementation, just wanted to talk a little bit that this is a, these are some of the projects that we have, and some of the areas that have active complete streets implementation that you see around town. Some of them are more active than others. The downtown Half Moon Bay area is, has quite a bit of components already in place, mainly sidewalks in that case. The Highway 1 corridor, although intermittent, has elements of the complete street with the Class 1 pathways, as well as some pedestrian enhancements, although those are lacking as well. The adjacent to schools, we can, you see a lot of complete street components adjacent to schools through the Safe Routes to School program, through the county and the school district. We have a Poplar Complete Street project that is moving forward, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the next, in the coming slide. And then we have a Kelly Complete Street project that's currently unfunded, that's part of our capital improvement program that we will be focusing on as we go through our list of projects. I also want to talk a little bit about some of the constraints with complete streets. What, from that menu of items that you can implement, that's where the constraints kind of play into that, as far as what's being implemented. What's the community's desire? We have to, we have to meet certain ADA considerations. We have right-of-way limitations that, that come into play, and Poplar's a great example of that, as far as width of streets. And of course, funding is another element that we have to be cognizant of as we discuss this and talk through this, this item. So the Poplar Complete Streets project, I just wanted to highlight that a little bit. This, we actually had a very nice workshop that kicked off this project hosted by the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee back in the early September. There was this workshop. We are in the process of putting an RFP out to get a designer on board so we can take those comments and feedback and put it into a conceptual plan that we can bring back to the BPAC, as well as Planning Commission and City Council. Just to highlight the Poplar Complete Street and kind of show you some of the pitfalls as far as funding goes, we have a grant from the federal government for $1.2 million. The project's approximately 3,000 feet long. It goes all the way from Main Street to Railroad Avenue and ties right into the Poplar Gateway project. And we have, although we're still in the conceptual phase and we don't have an estimate to work off of, just hearing the feedback, it, it's, it would be hard to keep this project within that $1.2 million federal fund, federal grant that we have available. And so that's part of the challenge, and that kind of segues us into the funding options. So our current funding mechanism, we have, the current funding structure that we've gone to is basically a pay-as-you-go type of structure. So we have different types of transportation funds that are allocated to the city, gas tax, registration fees, Measure M, just to name a few. General fund dollars could be utilized towards that local tax, sales tax is part of that. We have grants, local, state, and federal grants that are available in certain situations to supplement our funds for transportation needs. Impact fees could be utilized. The Highway 1 North project is a good example of that, where the signalized intersection is funded through that development project. And we also have direct development improvements. So we, as we, as projects move for, as certain projects move forward, they do have elements as part of that to construct improvements, whether it be sidewalks, intersection, signals. There's different pieces, but that's another way of getting some of these improvements constructed. And then we're looking, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit more in detail and depth on the other, on some other options. We're going to go over a little bit about assessment districts, the deferred street agreements, and bonding opportunities. So just to highlight a little bit about gas tax and our general fund. So these, these are projections for fiscal year 1718 and fiscal year 1819. We are, we're going to get the final numbers on the 1718 amount, but essentially, we have the way that our table's structured, and this relates to Prop 6. So the, before SB1, so all the other gas tax funds that we receive for 1718, we're, we were projected to have $275,000, and for 1819, it's about, roughly around the same amount, $287,000, and that's based on an estimate from MTC and the State Department of Finance. And then we have the SB1 portion that comes in. So this first-year implementation, 1718, we only received the SB1 portion for half the year. That's why that dollar amount is less than half of what we see in the 1819 projection. That gets bumped up to $210,000 for 1819. And so we look, we're looking at a total of $360,000 to about half a million dollars for 1819. Now, if Prop 6 passes and SB1 is repealed, then that middle portion goes away, and so we're looking, then we could look back to the top-line item, so we're looking really at the magnitude of $275,000 to $290,000. And the important thing to note on the gas tax is that this is, these are, these are dedicated funds for transportation improvements and maintenance. These funds can't be used for other means, and so that's an important designation that I want to just highlight as we, as the community listens to the, votes on Prop 6, and we look at these gas tax funds. Now, for the general fund, we do have various sources. This funds the, but the caveat is this funds the majority of our general government services. So in certain situations, in certain years, we may have needs that arise, and general funds need to be utilized for any, any number of items. And so it's, it makes it difficult to program a streamed, a streamed fund amount as, when we're looking at establishing a five-year program, which is what we're, we're moving towards as far as our pavement rehabilitation and, and maintenance projects. So that's, that's an important designation that I just wanted to highlight as far as the general funds. So we have, we also have grants and fees. There are a number of different grants. I've listed a few here, the Active Transportation Program. There is a federal and state and, and local component to that Active Transportation Program that's looked at putting transportation development funds, as well as the old Safe Routes to School program that the state and federal government ran. They've all put into this larger ATP pot of, of funding that comes around once every couple of years. We do have the Safe Routes to School. It's a smaller group, that's more of a local, regional grant that, that's through CCAG. And then we have some other state funds, such as the Highway Safety Improvement Program, that, that can help enhance some of our, of our needs. Now, the issue with grants are, one, they're competitive, so it's not a guaranteed amount that we would be collecting. They require certain criteria, such as density requirements, distance to transit, depending on the type of grant we're looking at. And so that makes it an unreliable pot of funds for ongoing implementation of our program. Now, for specific projects, you may have a project that meets one of these grants perfectly, but we cannot, but it's hard to do that for our ongoing maintenance and rehab program. We have impact fees that could be utilized, but again, that's, that's uncertain dollar amount. It's tied to new development, so very limited development means little fees. And then the caveat with that is we cannot use that for maintenance of, ongoing maintenance, nor can we use it to fix an existing issue. Those funds need to go towards capacity improvements and new, new improvements. And so that, it limits that pot of money as far as what we can utilize it for. There are direct development improvements, essentially a developer being required to incorporate that infrastructure. But again, that's, you know, little, very little development means very little improvements that would be done. So it's, it would be really tied to the amount of development that moves forward. One other idea, option that's out there, it's nothing new, but bonding, we could use that to, we could, we could do, use that to supplement our funds, but again, that wouldn't be new funding, that would be a source of generating current dollars for projects with the, but we still would have to pay that back ultimately at the end. So it wouldn't be a new stream of revenue that we'd be looking at. And so that takes us to assessment districts. And talking a little bit about a benefit assessment districts, the, the important piece, the important piece to be here is that this, this could be something that's driven by a community. It could be done by a petition, it could be done through council direction, and it's something that we could utilize for, for prioritization. If a community, if a, if a group of citizens on a, on a block want to do a project where they implement their, where they implement a complete street components, we could utilize this to help fund that, that, that project. And so essentially, the, the improvements would be a direct benefit to the street, and it could be sidewalk, curb gutters, lighting, utility, undergrounding, a wide variety of items. The assessment amounts are, would vary from street to street, depending on the length of the street, the width, what types of benefits the, the community in that particular location would be looking to implement. So it, it would vary, and, and once we look into it in more detail, we, that, that would be something that we'd be providing as far as how much those assessments would be. But we, the other piece is we can look at it in conjunction with some of the deferred street agreements that the city currently has on, in, throughout the city, and I'll talk a little bit about that in more detail. But again, this is a defined process, it's defined by state law, there's a vote that would be required by all the benefited property owners, and so it's an established process that we could utilize to help supplement our funding. So on the deferred street agreements, since 1971, the city has been entering into deferred street agreements. We have over 280 throughout the city. Now, these deferred street agreements vary a little bit as far as the language, but essentially there's an established process through our municipal code that, you know, when a develop, when a project is being proposed, the applicant will either build the improvements, or they will enter into this deferred street agreement where they will either build the improvements when the city requests that to move forward, such as a complete street project where we're looking to complete a segment of crosswalk, sidewalks. But we can also look at it from, but we could do that, or we could look at leveraging that as, as a standalone, depending on what the homeowner, the applicant prefers to do. So that's an established process the city's been doing since 1971. One of the, and, so where that comes back into the deferred street agreements, where that comes into the benefit district, where we look at, where we're looking at one particular location, Belleville Boulevard, this is one of those streets where we have a mix, a mix match of different types of components. Some streets have, some homes have built-out sidewalks, a lot of it have gaps, we have varying widths, and so this would be, this might be a good case study, because we do have quite a bit of recorded deferred street agreements. We have 18 of them on this street that affects 26 total parcels. So the idea might be that on this particular, this might be one good case study for us to look at a pilot program to implement a deferred, sorry, an assessment benefit district with the fact that we do have 18 properties that are already required to work with the city through that deferred street agreement. So what are our next steps? So, what are our next steps from here? Well, we're looking for the city council to review the strategy for the project funding, and authorize staff to review the strategy for project funding, look at drafting some policy framework to bring back to the council for review and discussion, and formulate a community outreach strategy. We would also be working, as John mentioned earlier in the presentation, we would be looking at requesting the mobility and finance subcommittees to review and formulate recommendations to bring back to the city council and the community for additional discussion and review. With that, that concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you, Maz. That was a great presentation. Do we have questions? I think we'll take three minutes for a break. We're back in session.
I have one thing.
Please.
So, just getting back to the deferred street agreements, one of the reasons why the assessment districts are seen by the staff as being a very viable option is, is that most, if not all, of those agreements include some provision for at least theoretical waiver of a protest against the formation of assessment districts. So, there was clearly within, even from the very beginning of those agreements, there was an understanding that the city would logically look at a benefit assessment district as a way to offset and not require, frankly, the property owners to come up with a large sum of money to build the frontage improvements at a later date. So, that's, I just wanted to make that kind of clear. Each of them have their own provisions, as Maz said, but, and they're, for the majority of them, there are provisions for calling that. But I think the benefit assessment district seems like the very viable option in our minds, simply because it allows for a process in which those can be paid over time, rather than in a lump sum cost to the property owners for that call. So, just wanted to.
How does it work with, on a street where there are 18 parcels with deferred agreements, and what ate without them? How's that work?
Well, I don't know how it will work if we move forward with that. You know, there remains a lot of questions about, and we can probably talk about that in a different forum, in terms of the legal side of things, but clearly, there's some question as to how much we can actually force folks to not be able to vote on a democratic process such as formation of the assessment district. That being said, you do have the leverage, under most of those agreements, if not all of them, to say, fine, if you don't agree to this, then you're going to spend X dollars right now putting these improvements in, and we can kind of move from that point, in which time, then, the council could make a decision, a policy decision, on how it would approach paying for the other eight parcels that don't have these agreements, and whether that would be general fund, gas tax, sales tax, whatever that might be. So, I think the objective is to look at the benefits. I think the, Maz touched on it, but what we've seen in other jurisdictions, and I'll just reiterate that, is that oftentimes, it's hard to prioritize sites and locations. A lot of jurisdictions use the willingness to form a benefit assessment district and to participate financially in improving your values and improving your neighborhood and community as a means to help identify and self-select what streets are moved forward in the process for improvements. So, it's a way to prioritize and have folks within the community self-prioritize those at times. And so, there's obviously needs in which sometimes there just are safety issues that you've got to address, but where you're sort of mixed in terms of which street, which street section to come forward with. Certainly, one of those selection factors could be, are the folks on that street willing to participate in a benefit assessment district? And it's ultimately up to the city council to decide what the city will put forth in terms of forming that. And as I say that, what I mean is, we could, as a city, influence and help this process by paying for the cost of design of that. And that would not have to be borne by each of the assessments. So, that's an example of how we could have skin in the game, as they say, provide that, also make that available for doing the engineering study that needs to be done to establish the value and the benefit, and the benefit cost out of that. So, those are things that we need to work on and deal with, and that's part of what we're really sort of saying is, these are things that we need to sit down and then work through with each of the subcommittees to talk about, kind of, these strategies, and whether any or all of them make sense.
John, could the city do more than just do the design work? For example, could they say a half or a quarter of the actual cost of the improvements would be the city, as long as the benefit assessment district paid the rest? Is that a viable possibility?
Absolutely. It remains within the council's control, particularly with the, with your policies and within your capital improvements program, of how you allocate that, and you could choose whatever point to how much skin you want in the game.
My second question is, it was unclear to me how you assess how much each of the people in the benefit assessment district is actually charged. You said you can't do it on a property value, but I don't understand what other basis you could do it.
The idea of the benefit assessment district is the benefit. So, there is an engineering study that's prepared in conjunction with and prior to any vote being held. That analysis and assessment by a specialized individual, looking at all the improvements that are proposed, would establish, basically, each property's benefit. Usually, that's in frontage improvements. So, if you've got a 50-foot wide lot and somebody else has a 100-foot wide lot, your cost would be double for that of 100-foot versus the 50-foot wide lot. If you've got a corner lot, your benefit might be derived, because you're dealing with a corner situation and two-street frontages, your cost and your benefit would be derived from that, and your cost would therefore reflect that. It doesn't necessarily mean it's a two, you know, it's a two-to-one ratio. That's something that that engineer would come forward with. But that's, that's how typically, when you're looking at street improvements, you're usually looking at frontage improvements, is what you're dealing with.
Thanks for the education.
Okay. So, I'm feeling really overwhelmed by all of this. I see, there's a lot here. There's a lot of issues here. You know, I think, do we do complete streets and where is a big issue, and how we do it? I think pavement management is kind of a separate thing, and I think the funding piece is separate, you know, again. So, I'd like to tease these out. First of all, I want to say about Prop Six. I think voting yes on Prop Six is a really bad idea, and we passed a resolution against it. I think there's so much crappification of our lives going on right now. I mean, real crappification. Crappification of our schools, crappification of our government, crappification of all of our infrastructure. You know, if you want clean streets, well-paved streets, you've got to pay for it. You pay for it now, or you pay for it later, you know, but you pay for it. So, what are we willing, you know, to pay for? So, you know where I'm coming down on this. So, I just want to start by talking about complete streets. So, I don't know about complete streets. I know that Caltrans is promoting complete streets, and it's kind of in the state's design manual, but I'd like to look at it more like about what problems we're trying to solve, right? Because I think there are some places where we can do complete streets and other places where, you know, it just isn't feasible, or people don't want to pay for it, or, you know, it's a nice, quiet, little cottagey street, and might be inappropriate to load up all that infrastructure, we don't have enough money anyway. So, what problems are we trying to solve? As far as I'm concerned, it's like slowing traffic down, so it's safer, and we might do that by narrowing streets. I think it's, you know, solving the stormwater runoff problem. You know, does it have to be gutters? Can it be, you know, bio swells or some other problem? We definitely want to make our streets more walkable, because we want people to get out of their cars, right? So, we have to have, you know, some safe, protected areas where people can walk and where people can bike. So, you know, it's like safety, stormwater, dealing with stormwater, slowing traffic, making things more walkable. So, how do we get at those problems without necessarily having to adopt some Caltrans standard design manual feature that's still a lot of infrastructure and very expensive? So, that said, so, you know, it makes sense to adopt most of those elements, to me, for Poplar Street and Kelly for sure, because they connect, you know, downtown to our beach areas, right? It becomes an economic development thing. We want people to use downtown and shop and live, and we want to give them access to the coast. It's easy, you know, safe access. So, I would want to sort of focus, you know, on sort of major infrastructure on those two streets, and, you know, go after grants to finish those. And I've heard from a lot of people in the last year or two about how important it is for folks living in the Main Street areas to be able to walk safely to Poplar Beach, or travel in their little carts, or whatever it is. It seems to be a really popular project. So, maybe, you know, near term, we focus on finishing a complete street project from Main Street down to One, you know, in that portion of Poplar. And then, you know, as we can find funding, you know, move on down. People seem to be really interested in participating in the design of all that. I think that's great. Kelly is another one, where we can, you know, probably, you know, it's, these are more robust streets, they provide access, I think we can accommodate more infrastructure. So, if I was going to prioritize on complete streets, that's where I would do it. Ultimately, I think Main Street has to be important, you know, because you have Main Street, then you have those two major streets connecting it. So, I want to make sure as we do some economic development and design studies in Main Street, that we also look at that. So, in other parts of town, in neighborhood streets, maybe we can solve some of those problems without a huge amount of infrastructure and at a less cost. Maybe we come up with some branding, you know, like a Magnolia Street where you just finished paving, maybe it's, you know, cottage street design, or something like that. It's a little lighter touch, a little less expensive, maybe Benefit Assessment District, you know, or something like that. So, I'd like us to develop sort of a tiering about how we approach our streets, how much infrastructure is needed, with those other goals I talked about at the beginning in mind, kind of. So, those are all pretty important. So, we want to keep those objectives top of mind. As far as pavement management, I think City Hall's been doing a great job at getting on top of that. I think we're going to come out good when we do a new study. And we've revisited that, I think, every two years, and I think there are some problems that turned up recently, like Mill Street. I think staff's, Public Works is doing a good job at getting on top of that. I'm pleased with that. And then there's the, you know, the funding piece, and I think you've touched on all those things. It's a matter of, okay, so, here's our tiering plan for streets, how much we think we need to solve these problems, and then, you know, coming up with a funding plan. So, maybe it's a little more of a detailed capital improvements program that looks at all those things, and maybe ultimately, we end up with our own Half Moon Bay street design manual or something that ties into the capital improvements program. But I think we need to sort of, and I know I missed an important meeting about this because I had to travel for work, the first one that you had on this subject, so I'm sorry if I'm going over all ground covered before, but I think we want to keep this organized, because I see our Public Works is really, really important to our economic development and our quality of life. You know, I think we want to do a better job of organizing it, getting a handle on what it is and what we want to do with it, and take us into a new, you know, age, kind of, you know, where things are, you know, we just, we wait till things fail and then we patch them, right? And it is kind of expensive, and maybe we want to, at some point, do a, you know, a sales tax, look at a sales tax increase. If people aren't willing to pay the gas tax, you know, they can't have it both ways. So, I think we need to be honest with them about that, more honest than we typically are as politicians, right? So, and, you know, we want parks, too. So, ultimately, we might want to look at another sort of bigger funding source, but... So, those are just sort of my general ideas. I think, as we think about the funding piece, I think we need to look very closely at the results of Prop Six. I think that's going to tell us a lot. So, if voters in Half Moon Bay say yes to Prop Six, you know, 65%, 70%, I think that tells us kind of where people are coming down about money. So, I think we need to take a look at that, and look at it, you know, on a precinct basis to figure out, you know, where's the support and where isn't, and help inform our prioritization that way. One thing, I'm just raising this question because I'm not totally familiar with the concept, but, you know, this is a replacement for redevelopment. The state passed a variety of bills dealing with infrastructure financing districts. So, we used to have a redevelopment district in Half Moon Bay, and we had a community redevelopment agency that caused a whole lot of problems. But, you know, maybe it's worth looking at a more generalized infrastructure financing district in our, for our downtown core area, you know? Don't know, just throwing that out there, because I know that that tool exists, and I don't know if it's appropriate here, but maybe our new city manager, working with staff, can help us figure that out. But, so that's kind of where I'm coming down, is I think we just, we need an organized plan, and that would help me think things through, so. plan, and that would help me think things through, so.
So I actually, that was very, very detailed. Good. Good conversation. I agree with the Kelly and Poplar prioritization. I think those are imperative to, and I have heard people also wanting that, but I also think it's good for our economic development as well. So to me, resources should be allocated towards those two streets, but I would also think that the people living on those streets would be benefiting from that. So I think that we should be utilizing the benefit assessment district and going after those funds from those houses. I know there's people on Poplar in particular that are part of the deferred street agreements, so I think we have a lot of potential there. And I'm okay with even what Harvey suggested of maybe like 25% the city's picking up, and we also do the design paid for by the city. But, I mean, people should, that are benefiting the most, that live in those areas, should be paying for at least some of what's going on in those streets, because they will benefit from it, as well as the talent, and we should pick up our own portion of it, is my perspective. But, so that's my feel there. I am not sure, and this kind of goes to like a bigger issue, but, I mean, is there any possibility that we eliminate deferred street agreements moving forward? You know, I don't know what the thought process is there, but it seems like more of a process that has passed, and I'd almost like to see if we could come up with a better solution to what we could do moving forward instead of that. You probably have some ideas already, it looks like.
Well, we have been pursuing more actual street improvements with the development, but our position sort of remains is that we think that there needs to be an option available. We have building permits that are issued for a lot, let's say, on Valdez or whatever, and there's not another stretch of sidewalk anywhere on the street. Does it make sense to build the sidewalk in front of that house and deal with it at this point? Our feeling has been no, it doesn't make sense. And while the deferred agreements are a challenge of their own, enforcing, enforcing someone to build a sidewalk which does not connect to anything remotely close to connectivity is a problem. So we've been sort of fighting that on a case-by-case basis, in terms of if it makes a logical sense in terms of connectivity, then we're asking for the street improvements at that time, and otherwise, we're still coming forward to you and asking for approval of deferred agreements. Maz?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that also in those cases where you don't have any other developed, you know, sidewalks, whatever, nearby, it can also be a hazard, because we don't know where our plan line is yet. So we don't know. You know, you have, you might have encroachments into the street, so if we build that sidewalk and curb and gutter, we may have to put N barricades right there. So there's that safety issue too, so it's tough. Now, if it's an infill, everything's built around it, we would all, we would prefer to have the improvement done. Yeah.
All that makes sense. I think I'm more suggesting that the language used, which probably has changed over time, but in those agreements, be more preferential towards what we can do with it. I know some of the ones that were written in the past were a little more vague-ish, so I'd like to make sure we tighten that up. It's probably been done already, just want to make sure. And then, benefit assessment districts, so my understanding is it's street by street, right? So it, the kind of like the economic, you know, the economy's a scale, bringing in somebody to do that street, we don't really gain much, per se, if we do one street at a time. Is that generally true, or is there still, you know, I mean, if we were doing like two or three streets at a time? Just throwing that out there, because I agree still with the Poplar and Kelly focus to start out, and maybe we try to do those at the same time. I don't know what the difference is in terms of bringing in two separate contractors at two different times, or how that works. Just give me a perspective.
I think Maz and I would absolutely say that doing multiple streets would be always preferable. You're going to benefit from economies of scale. Also, you're closing that street down and doing the work kind of in one opportunity. But frankly, the issue is, if there is a street where there is little support, that can also kill off an assessment district. So part of the, part of the work, and one of the issues we're talking about, is sort of that community outreach strategy, and how do you start to have that conversation in the community about these types of districts, and how you form them, and what they mean, and where they go? It goes a long way, because the worst thing you could do is go through the whole process, design it, and you have 49% of the benefit assessment voting yes, and 50 plus one saying no. That's the problem. So you've got to always like, with many things, you have to look at who's supportive and how you draw the boundaries.
I wanted to make the point about community outreach, and maybe the perfect time to do community outreach about the general issue is, would be after we've done Poplar or Kelly. Then we've got a project we can show people, and we could say, "Look, look what's happened here. These people's property values have gone up, it's safer here, parking is better, everything is better." You show them that, and then, and then you educate them, and you explain what benefit assessment, and you give them the same kind of spiel you gave us tonight, about how expensive everything is and how difficult it is to get funding for it, and here are your options, folks.
If I could just say this, Councilmember Eisen alluded to it. Poplar is probably the second most populated street of deferred street agreements. So I, I think that we're going to have to seriously look at whether we maybe combine that funding source with looking at an assessment district for that. We can come back and bring those details, but it happens to be, I think, the second largest concentration in the city of deferred street agreements. So it provides us an opportunity as a test case as well, in terms of arguing and outreach to leverage grant funds, city funds, along with perhaps an assessment district, to get everything we want. So I agree with you, but I think we might take that in a different, a slightly different approach to actually looking at selling the benefit assessment district to that project, because we have so much other funding available that it will soften the cost to those property owners now. Food for thought. A lot of work to do down the road.
I'll kind of, I'll leave off with that. I would like to encourage us to go after benefit assessment districts for both Kelly and Poplar, and work on those first, is my perspective. I do think that we should be able to make that happen, at least with Poplar, I would think. Kelly might be a little bit tougher, but maybe then we prioritize Poplar first, if we can't do them in conjunction with each other, but I would love to do them together, if at all possible. But understand that, you know, it's probably hard to do, and then we're eliminating access to both beaches right at the same time, which could be difficult as well, but that's kind of my, the ending of my statements.
Thank you. I don't know whether I really mean that. Sounds like there's a lot of work to be done. Start now, right? Got it? Okay. Items for future agendas. Yeah, let's, let's deal with the horses, please. Diapers, diapers, diapers. Okay. With that, city council reports? None? I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.